Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you much.
Are you ready? Okay, we will call the regular council meeting for Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. If I could get a motion.
I saw move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Second item is the consent calendar. If there's no issues with it, I would entertain a motion to accept.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Next item is open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any item that isn't on the agenda. If you have an item on the agenda and you wish to discuss it with us or have a comment about it at the time, you'll be given an opportunity at that time. So do we have anyone here for open forum?
Yes, we do.
I know we do. If you would please come up and address us. Jenny, you want to help this young lady out? Thank you. If you could just let us know your name and.
Hi, my name is Brady Moore. I live on Kander Court and I am, and I understand that right now I'm not. Not allowed to have chickens in my backyard. I always wanted to raise chickens. I like chickens because of the following reasons. Chickens eat ticks. My grandpa got bit by a tick and ended up in the emergency room. But chickens can gobble up every last tick before everyone, anyone gets sick. They also provide us with eggs. Eggs are so yummy. Scrambled is my favorite. Another great thing about chickens is that they eat table scraps, which makes less waste for the landfill. You can also use these. Their droppings for compost. Not only are they easy to take care of, they will teach me responsibility. I would like to ask the Nisswa City Council for a change in the zoning so I can have chickens in my backyard. I asked my neighbors for their support and they were very supportive. I brought my list of signatures with me. I think there are many people in this room who support me. Two, these are the rules I would follow if I were to have chickens. And these are the rules I told my neighbors about. Maximum seven chickens. We don't have a huge flock. Safe in chicken coop so they don't run off. No roosters so they don't make noise. We're gonna make the poop into compost for great fertilizer. No smell because we're gonna have a small flock and clean coop. I hope you support my request. Do you have any questions for me?
Anyone have questions?
No, we don't. I'd like to see your T-shirt, though. Can we see your shirt?
Park backyard chickens. Very nice, very nice. No questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, how can we say no to that?
I know.
So that's a great question.
What I would like to ask the council then is, do we ask planning and zoning to look into this and see how our neighbors have done it or what we can do? I know, I think Bethany might have some ideas on how to do that. But I think it's something that we would have to send to planning and zoning to have them look at since it'll require amending our ordinance, I believe, if we do that. So Bethany, do you?
Should the city council ask the planning and zoning department to look into this and to get information to present to the planning and zoning come to the commission, then we could see if they would propose an amendment.
Do you need that in a motion for?
I would.
I saw move.
I'll second.
Second.
Well, Mark, you sooner beat you to it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We're gonna look into it.
I will work to have information on the next planning commission meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You'll have an answer from us in August.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A lot of adults have a hard time speaking to the council. I don't know, so you did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Good job.
Yep.
Okay, next item is the city administrator's monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor Ryan. Good evening, members of the council. That was a nice open forum, a way to start our evening. My monthly report is in your packet. I would like to take an opportunity to recognize an employee and I'm gonna go step down to the podium real quick. So Maggie Wintler, our finance specialist, has had a couple of milestones with the city recently. So first, she celebrated her ten-year work anniversary with the city of Nisswa. So we wanted to acknowledge her and congratulate her for her ten years. And to get it right, I brought my paper just to make sure I didn't say it wrong. But she also earned her Minnesota Master Municipal Clerk designation. I think it took two or three years after she got her municipal clerk designation from the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Association. And so we just want to congratulate her as well. So nice job. Yes.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Happy to answer any questions if there are any for me.
Any questions for the city administrator?
Under the Freedom Days with the forty thousand, the double of the.
Yes.
What were some of the safety issues I can imagine, but?
There were no issues as far as problems. I think the event went off really well. Conversations we will have within our staff and then working with the chamber is, how do we, I'm gonna say, we need to elevate our event planning preparation. We just don't have enough people in the city to help provide the support necessary, I think. For example, with five police officers, I just don't think that that's enough and it's adequate at this point. So we're doing all we can within what we have within our abilities. So is that bringing in other departments, support, different ways? How do we do that? Because I think we just need, we need more people involved to ensure the safety for everyone. So it's things like that.
Okay. I do know one item that the fire chief talked to me about was there's gonna, they were gonna work with the chamber about some of the staging. Cause it gets way, you can't stage in front of the fire hall. It's just, I mean, actually in the front of the fire hall. Something, so the chief is gonna talk with Pam and they're gonna work on that. There was just, it's always been done that way and it's just, it, it's too much. They'll work it out, they'll figure it out.
Well, it's an obvious risk with, although knowing where the location of the fire hall is in the event of an emergency, whether it's in the town or out. Traffic is very congested.
Which is a whole nother.
Yes, it is.
We need to have one day.
But it's real.
Yep.
Very real.
Yep. Okay. City, are you done? Anyone else, any questions for Dave? City attorney?
Good evening, everybody. Couple of agenda items coming up that I'll be involved in, but nothing here. And I know Joe's got a lot to say, so I defer to him.
Okay. City engineers?
Good afternoon, I'd like to ask things to say, actually.
Microphone, please, microphone.
Start up.
She, she did a better job than I did, so. I guess the report for where we at with the Gull Lake Trail right now? I know there's been some concerns about some of the pounding that happened after the rain event. There were a couple of rain events. Some of the year, the restoration weren't, was not done. So it didn't stand a chance against the rain. I mean, that's just a given. And then the other real concern that all these kind of fall, fall under the category of is you do not have storm sewer in, in your city. So it's all relies on infiltration. And when we put a trail, we can happily put a trail right where that infiltration spot was. So you don't find those things out sometimes till later. But there, most of them are easy fixes and some of them, it's just gonna have to drain. That's just the way it is because you don't have storms. We had about three or four areas. One area is, was due to storm sewer that they have to put for swift. They have to put control around that so it doesn't go right in the lake, down the pipe and in the lake that's over by that. I want to say that property, just as you come around the bed on, on Lower Royal Lake Road from Hazelwood Drive.
Near Nisswa Cove.
Yeah, that, that potted up real well, but you know, during the storm, but it all infiltrated it back into it. There's a, there's a protection against it so that the silt won't go in there and that'll just go down into the lake. Actually, it'd go down to the neighbor's yard across the street and then go down to the lake. So it would have made a little delta. If you travel down a little farther, we've got where they, I'm sure most people are familiar with the Yonkers and Johnsons by the Blake property where the horses are. They had an existing drainage problem there already. And the conversation we had when we went out there, Amber and I, it was we would, after the trail went in, I'd be able to deal with it because then I'd be able to see what's happening. Otherwise, you end up chasing puddles in these really flat, low areas. And that is flat, low area. That dude, that does go off into the woods. And we, we, we were able to talk with him and, and we're gonna make a channel that goes in there. He'd already started one, but he, he never finished it. So we'll, we'll do that. There's a couple of areas right across when we cross the golf course. That is the, in particular, the lowest area where we cross that Lower Royal Lake Road, just come right where the golf course is. It's the only crossing or there. And that is exactly right in the low area. And there's no place for the water to go. If it gets high enough, it'll go into the golf course and track around a little bit down there. But you can also see all the pounding that's been there by the looks of the grass. What we're gonna do there is we're gonna raise things up a little bit because we haven't set that, that ped ramp yet in that concrete there. So we'll set that a little higher. We'll have that runoff and we're gonna make a little swell that'll be a place for the water to go to infiltrate. So that'll be that spot. Most of the rest of them are little pounding areas that will, after we do the irrigation, I mean, the restoration should go away. Now that the, one of the bigger ones is where the washout was on the hill area within that area that we go behind the golf, the golf course. Had that been restored, I think it would have stood a pretty good chance of not having erosion. It was a good event, too. And it was back to back event. And so while one came down there and hit it, it saturated and then the next one would hit it really good with the water rushing down because you don't have any vegetation to slow it down because they just got done. It didn't stand a chance. What we're gonna do, though, since it did happen and we're, and since we are in construction now, it wouldn't hurt to do a small fix there would be to put curb down like, kinda like the sign. Seventy-eight going down towards the both ramp in Lake Shore. They have that curb on line beside. So the water will be able to go over there, take that down, we'll put rip rap at the end of it, that'll bust it up. But then again, that's where the water will stay because it's kind of a low spot. If it gets high enough, it does trickle over, it'll go across the road. It's kinda what it's always been doing, so nothing will change there. We'll just try to do a little fix on that. The erosion by putting that curb in and try to help it out.
And Mr. Engineer, how many, how many feet do you anticipate of that curbing needing to be installed?
I think I initially said seventy-five in this. We've looked at it a little bit. I, I'm still contemplating whether they're doing both sides. I don't, I don't think we need to, I don't think we have to. So I'm, I'm, I think I'm just gonna stick with the one side. It'll probably be about one to one hundred and twenty-five feet.
Now, is that the tuminus or?
Concrete.
We're gonna put concrete in. I talked to the tuminus guy, they have to put a shoe on and do it. It's six to one sometimes, you know, and, and the area that's so tight, it'd be easier for them to do with concrete, set up a form in there than to run the paving crew there with the shoe on and try to do that. So at their request, I'm gonna do it that way.
And do you have an anticipated cost?
No, I'm just, I, there's, there's about five areas. Hanson's another area that I need to get an estimate on. These are all, all that were, all these we, we anticipated to do.
Yep.
Except for the curbing going down the hill. But everything else in the crosscut around it, put in the one spot. But other than that, they were all anticipated and there's no surprises there. We do have funds within the contract that will cover this. So it's not, it's not gonna, it shouldn't make the contract go over either.
I did have an opportunity to meet with city engineer yesterday and drive the length of the trail from the end of the trail to the beginning of, of Nisswa's going backwards ultimately. I echo all of his points that he made and my concerns were addressed that I had and also with Mr. Roger Landers as well. I think with a bulk of the, the aftermath from, from these, from these rain events, the two relatively significant rain events in a short timeframe, I mean, you're gonna have that post-construction. Being from the construction industry, I understand that there's always gonna be some sort of erosion that's gonna come from it. It's gonna be then followed by remedial work and that asphalt was relatively just laid. So we're gonna be discovering these things in real time. I don't think there's any other substantial concerns outside of what Joe's raised.
I, I would caution to jump to things that are like it was paved out there and there was no classified backing put behind the pavement, but that's simply because it's not in the process yet. They pave and they come back and do that. Now, in, in the interim, if you get a rainfall event, it's gonna make problems. So that's just the way construction goes.
Yep.
So when they put this curbing in, they'll get that backing in right away, though, I would assume.
Excuse me?
When they put the curbing in, they'll get that backing down. They'll have to do something more there for the curb anyway, so we.
Oh, yes, no, it's, it's already been restored, you know, there, but.
I know.
We'll need to do the work, yep.
Down there. Yes.
Any other questions?
Okay.
And the other project that we were working on is the Ronwell, so.
Got the electrical figured out?
Yeah, electrical figured out, yes.
I had a very important electrician check that to make sure it was done. It'd be your.
Amazing, you can shut off sprinklers by tripping a GFI.
Yeah.
And get hit by it in the interim.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on our, I think that's that.
Yep.
Next item on our agenda, new business is public hearing ordinance amendment. So this point, I'd like to open a public hearing. I need a motion to open a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to open public hearing in regards to THC interim ordinance.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll have a public hearing. Presentation by the staff.
I can take this if you'd like, Mayor Ryan. So I'm just gonna read a few pieces from the information that's in your packet because I think it summarizes it nicely as far as what we are here to discuss tonight. So at the June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting, the city council directed staff to initiate steps to extend the interim THC moratorium ordinance. The required public hearing notice was published. And at our meeting tonight, the council will hold a public hearing to receive any public comment and then decide whether or not to extend the interim THC moratorium. The purpose of this ordinance is to authorize and direct city staff to gather the necessary information required to make a recommendation to the city council about how the city should amend its zoning, business licensing, or other general city code provisions related to the sale, testing, manufacturing, or distribution of THC products in conjunction with and in compliance with the recently adopted adult-use cannabis laws to better protect the residents of Nisswa. During the term of this ordinance, no business, person, or entity may establish a new use or expand an existing use that includes or involves the sale, testing, manufacturing, or distribution of consumable cannabinoid products that were legalized on July one, two thousand and twenty-two by the Minnesota Legislature's Amendment of Minnesota Statutes, Section one five one point seven two. So in essence, we are looking to extend the moratorium that was placed by the city council last August up until the point to which the new state office of cannabis management is established. Their licensing procedures are in place and then the city has the mechanisms which to grant any licenses if it so chooses and kinda work through those next steps. Did I cover the gist, Tom?
Well, you got it.
Great.
Um, public comment? No. There's no public comment that we can go ahead and close the public hearing? I need a motion for that.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion?
I have a question in regards to the, the specific word entity following no business person or entity. Mr. Attorney, does that encompass all legal organizations, LLCs, S Corps, any five oh one C three? Nothing can get squeezed through from your perspective?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I have no more questions.
Does anyone else have any question? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion to prove the updated THC extended interim moratorium ordinance as presented. And I'll.
Second. Second by Joe?
Joe.
Hey, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor Ryan, if I can have a motion to publish the summary ordinance in the newspaper.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to publish the updated ordinance in the local paper.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry. Next item is parks. With an acronym. Just in case I say it wrong, I'm not gonna say it.
Good evening. I talked to you last month regarding applying for the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission grant. So in your packet, you have the formal resolution to apply for that grant as well as the updated cost estimate for two thousand and twenty-five.
And I will also just add the Crowing County Board approved a resolution of support for this as well. So we will include that with our materials and we thank the county for that.
Just due to it being so large of a spreadsheet, thanks Excel. Can you advise what the actual bottom dollar amount is?
I believe it's seven thousand fifty-eight.
Seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Sorry about that. Sorry, yeah.
You have nothing to point.
Seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand is our estimated cost.
And are we using any matching funds on this?
We discussed using up to ten percent last month, so about seventy-five thousand.
And was it determined then that Lake Shore was doing ten as well or East Call?
Yep, Lake Shore is putting in some funding. And we do not have a final update on Fairview Township yet as to what they're able to contribute. But we should be able between at least Nisswa and Lake Shore, get to those, that was benchmarks to get the points. That five percent would be the initial benchmark.
And the seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty, that's for us and Lake Shore, right?
No, that is just Nisswa.
So as part of this resolution, I think the council should be aware that we would be applying to know to the ten percent local contribution commitment.
How that.
Does anyone have quite, any other questions for Amber on this? Joe? Okay. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Greater Minnesota Legacy Grant application and the Gull Lake Trail cost estimate rounding to seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars as presented.
Second.
Take your pick. Hey. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
I keep forgetting the delay, Joe, sorry. Next item is Parks LMC Grant Navigator Resolution.
This is an application request to apply to the league for their Grant Navigator program, which would offset the cost for the application that we are working with, with Seth on for the Gull Lake Trail. So our quote was five to six thousand dollars. The program, if awarded, would provide us with funding for five of that. And so if there was any overage, we would cover the difference, but hopefully would take care of, of most, if not everything.
Well, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Being that you're gonna be the president of this organization, what's our chances of getting this?
Well, the odds are even better, not because of that, but because Lake Shore applied for this exact same thing and they were awarded funding, so fingers crossed.
Okay. Any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the legal Minnesota Cities Grant Navigator app to the amount of five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
For the cost of the Gull Lake Trail.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bless you, Joe.
Recommendation from planning and zoning, reference zoning map amendment. Bethany?
Good evening, thank you. Property owners Dan and Sue Kuhn, sorry, are seeking to rezone parcel two eight one four zero five four one from Shoreland Residential to Highway Business. I have supplied you with a staff report that details answers to the questions our ordinance requires consideration of. It is staff recommendation that with its close proximity to establish commercial properties to the east and south, along with its location on a commercial intersection, staff finds the parcel suitable for commercial zoning. In keeping with the current commercial zoning along Hazelwood Drive, the request lends itself to be consistent with those adjacent properties and the highway business district. Staff also recognizes that zoning and ordinance changes will be made within the next eighteen to twenty-four months to correctly reflect commercial properties that lie within Shoreland, which will include this property. Staff has communicated this to the property owner. The Planning Commission recommended approval at the July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three regular planning commission meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Bethany?
I do have a follow-up from that planning and zoning meeting last week in regards to comments that were made by the applicant and his representative for the notion of this being passed for the rezoning. Was it stated that there is desire to put a, a commercial sign for business display on the property or was there not? There was not. So there is, there is not going to be a conditional use permit that'll be filed?
A conditional use permit will be required. So once.
Required for business operations.
Regardless, correct. So this rezone is just independent of that. There's no conditions that we can place on a rezone. So this is just for the rezoning of that property from Shoreland Residential to Highway Business.
I wasn't exactly sure, because we had like a twenty-five minute uh. Intermission at the start of that meeting, so.
Yes, apologize for that.
Knowing that we had a sound guy in the in the crowd, uh. Man.
Okay, any other questions for Bethany, anyone? Okay.
Oh.
I will entertain a motion.
Sir Mayor, I'll make a motion uh to approve the rezoning of parcel. Two eight one four zero five four one from Shoreland Residential to Highway Business as presented.
I'll second that.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Close. Carry.
Mr. Mayor, as this is also considered an ordinance amendment, I do need a motion to publish the summary in a in the newspaper.
I would so move that we publish this as well.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Number five, planning and zoning violation update, reference TM Investments LLC.
Thank you. On March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, our office received a formal complaint concerning commercial use on a residential zone parcel two eight. Three six zero five nine one. City staff conducted a site visit to six zero nine seven Nashway Road on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And observed clear evidence of commercial use, a driveway and parking areas exceeding the permitted size and impervious in excess of twenty-five percent in Shoreland. A follow-up site visit conducted on June twentieth demonstrated that the property owner had made minimal efforts to revegetate the property. And reduce the impervious to twenty-five percent. The following documentation and what you have in front of you um provides information and photos concerning the violations, requirements, and missed deadlines. I'm asking for the council's feedback on compliance options and deadlines for completion. In addition to those pictures that I supplied, I was able to go out on site today, and we do have additional pictures that will show you what it looks like today.
Before you go any further, can I just say something?
Yes.
If I leave my property sit like that, it'll grow weeds too, and that looks like it might have been. Seeded, but I don't think so. That's just my assumption, looking at the pictures.
While I was outs- on-site, I did notice that there was evidence that it had been seeded, um, there were rows.
Okay. And what is the impervious percentage right now?
Um, you can kind of see the rows right there in that picture, um, the impervious is estimated um on that parcel right now at sixty percent. It is Shoreland Residential, and so twenty-five percent is the maximum. So we need.
It says sixty percent now?
It's around sixty percent, correct. The building itself, along with um. Just the five hundred square foot driveway that was permitted is the maximum.
Now, is that close to where the runoff goes into that small little pond off of Nashway?
I'm not familiar with that, I haven't had a chance to look and see if there's any.
That's further down. Okay, is it fur- further down? I'm just trying to think it's near that area.
To to my knowledge, I do not believe that there's a pond near there, this is on the south side of Nashway, the nearest water. Would have would have been Round Lake.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not the one that's to the northeast or the what would that be?
I think I think Bass, no, it's no. Um. Here. Yeah. You can keep. Are there more photos, or is that it?
There are a few more pictures.
Yep.
Oh, no, that's it.
Okay.
So the question, the specific question that we have um tonight is, is this sufficient for revegetation purposes to bring it to impervious? Um, I believe that there's more that could be done, but we are looking for direction.
I I would say more needs to be done. Um. In that situation, if there are big, looks like there must be big trucks going in. Is that like a warehouse?
There had been, yes, and so there was.
That'll just dig up what's there right now even more, I mean, if you're bringing in big rigs, big trailers, I don't know what's going in and out of there, but I mean, if you're using a forty-eight footer.
Well, the idea is that there won't be.
What's that?
There won't be any commercial vehicles going in and out of this property.
You you. Unless you got a camera there, you don't know, but so I'm just gonna say. It's always been my feeling. That once you give an inch, someone will take a mile. Saw that happen in the past uh uh north. Um. Where, yes, I won't do it, but they end up doing it, I'm just gonna say that grass is not gonna stay there, I I would like to see something else. Or more added to it. More uh more substance, that's just my personal. Any other? I'm just more curious is what are our options? What do we do here, or where do we go from here?
There are certain things that can be done, yeah, of course, um, the property owner is here, representative of the property owner. But there are other avenues that we can entertain, such as having the property owner work with soil and water to revegetate um with an approved revegetation plan. Um, you can require specifics like X amount of trees to be planted, sod to be put down, uh, depends on where you would like to go with this.
And that would, that would be through the county? Soil and water?
Soil and water is Crowing County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Okay.
Jethro, do you have plans to do more, or? Yeah, why don't you come on up?
Please come on up.
Yeah.
Uh, Jethro Carpenter, your first. Six zero nine seven actually rode, so a couple of things is my dad's pole barn. Boy, um. So it's his personal stuff that's in there, there's no business can run out of there, he has. Um. Given the, we're construction guys, right, you know, so we had, it all came up round because we. Built the new dock at my dad's property on. At five nine two five Nashway Road, so. As far as trucks, like forty-eight foot trucks. You know, he has a motorhome in there that comes out. Once a year when he goes to Arizona, otherwise. It's his personal uh. Pole shed weather, big doors, golf carts driving in and out of there, and the last time I checked, you can drive across the yard with the golf cart. Um, as far as vegetation, so you can see in the picture there, there's sprinklers put in. So he's trying to get grass to grow, of course, right, but. Um, everything takes time, he'd be here, but he's in. California. Run a motorcycle ride for my mom, but. Um, anyways. So he couldn't be here because he had to bring my mom on a motorcycle ride. Um.
Was there any pre-prep before the seed was put down, and he, I mean, looks like it's just on top of class five, I mean.
Yeah, it it's not class five, none of it, it it's sand, um, there's some. Topsoil that was saved, part of the deal, it looks terrible because. The redoing Nashway Road, right, that berm out front that's all covered with weeds. We're a landscape contractor, we'd like to landscape it, besides that. We don't want to redo it after they put, they're putting a ditch in front, not a curb, so the grade of the road is changing and. Variety of stuff, so. That's the reason why that the berm and stuff looks worse than what it uh. In fact is, but he's making an attempt to grow grass, that is their intention. Um, as far as sodding it, I I guess. It's a little excessive, I don't know, do you guys have any ordinances to require people to have sod, go, I understand that. It has to be grass, and we have conceded and agreed to provide that, um. So I guess, if I have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer, we're trying to get the deal resolved, it's not uh. Yeah, not our intention to. Fight about it, so.
I have a question for you, um, I'll try to condense it into one. Knowing many of the items that are in these photos provided from. Your site visit on March thirty-first of this year, uh. Perhaps looks like a bulk fuel tank on a pallet. Looks like some of those timbers that are. Now that docks, yes, sorry, yeah. Uh, two-by-fours or four-by-fours for that dock, but. What's most peculiar outside of perhaps a offloading of such material is that. It's your company. It's your family's company branded. Peterbilt tractors, and one of which is a lowboy. There's also another. Looks like a. Tandem axle. Flatbed trailer for skid steer mini such, um. Looking at some of these markings in here, it's as if it's plowed out to accommodate a lot of this, um. You can kind of see some of the roots that are still there from the other pictures, not just this particular one. Um, it's a larger size pole structure, I understand that, used for personal use, but are there. Commercial activities that are taking place in this facility, and uh if there were, why is that?
No, so the trucks that were parked there, so Lowboy was there to haul an excavator to build a dock at a personal residence that. Didn't get paid for, because it's his own company that did it, so it it it's. While he has the ability to do the work, it wasn't that it was contracted hired. By a company, like say that you hired ABC dock builders to come do it, and they parked the deal there, that's not the case, this was his own. Equipment going to his own cabin to work, um, being parked there. Um, so that lowboy hauled an excavator, right, so. Um. Which you're from construction, I can imagine.
Then, I mean additionally, this council's. Very familiar with your family's operations in in this area with. Focus to one development that's taken obviously quite some time to.
Sure.
Go through this council and councils in the past, um. Are commercial functions being held elsewhere throughout the city, or is this kind of considered uh your main?
All of our, all of our equipment is stored in P quad in a gravel pit. When we're working up here. Yeah. So we don't, but this isn't the first time that it came up, right, Eric, I mean, we. My brother stays at my dad's house down the street when he was up here working, so we have in the past parked trucks there. It became an issue, right, with, so. We ceased, didn't, I mean, it wasn't, we weren't working out of there, but he would go there at the end of the night with a truck and park there, came up, we're, we got. Complaints about it, so we stopped, well, the problem is, is we've also, so Nashway is not a terribly wide road, right? So when you go tumb load equipment and go to stuff, so when we were landscaping the property a couple of years ago. Everybody was mad because they were parking on the road, so then you went and parked. The city advised us to park on our lot down there, so that's what we did. And then, now that became a problem, so. Um, anyways, that's the deal. So no commercial, we're not running a business out of there, we have no intention to run a business out of there, it's my dad's personal. Pole barn, in fact. He doesn't even really like us to be around there most of the time, so specifically because he. Doesn't uh. Want to get grief from anybody.
So he uses it for his RV, you're saying?
He has an RV in there, anybody's welcome to come look at there, he has his RV, his old. Um, it has some motorcycles, those ATVs, we parked a pontoon in there. He has an ant for cars, some old cars.
Is there a house inside there too, living?
There is, yeah, nobody lives there, but um, just recently got finished, I spent the first night there on Fourth of July. Um. So it's a four-bedroom house there.
So I guess, um, from what you've said, I'm not sure, how would we get to the twenty-five percent impervious?
Well, it's all seeded on that side, right, so the, and I pulled it up, so we had it surveyed originally, and I. Um. So we had it surveyed originally by Stormmark Land Survey, and it's closer to like eleven hundred square feet, and part of it's deceiving, so. Um. Because the county road right away comes in all the way to where the berm is essentially, so the driveway is fairly short, forty-five feet or fifty feet, whatever. Whatever, it was fifty, but I think they took some more road right away because they had to sell some property or some deal, and they, um. Wide national road道that you guys particularly care, but anyways, long story or long, the shortest story is. We're putting grass back in there for a yard, he'll take his motorhome out the front of the deal. And it's going to be grass.
Okay, if we do that area, does that take it down to twenty-five percent impervious?
I think we can get uh very close to the twenty-five percent, but all of that would need to be revegetated. And a driveway defined.
That's, and and again, we we'd be happy to pour asphalt, concrete or asphalt to driveway, but. We're really just waiting for an Ashway Road to get done, so we're able to do it so it doesn't get tore up again.
Bethany, what would your recommendations be for uh revegetating? You said, I mean, go to the soil and water. And say, what can we do, what can he do?
I'm not a landscaper or a contractor, but I know that there are. Other ways that we could achieve a better result than. Putting.
I am a landscaper, and I, I assure you guys. Revisit the deal in fall or next spring, there will be grass there. That's what I'd recommend. I get. Takes time.
Well, I think you can understand why the. Planning Administrator, Jen, excuse me, not Jenny. Why Bethany would have uh believed that there is evidence of commercial use there, and why she's not wrong for bringing that to our attention.
I'm not. I, I'm. Pretty transparent, man, I don't, if somebody calls, I answer and I tell them what's going on, because it makes it a lot easier.
I think that uh the three initial concerns need to be addressed in regards to individual i- items, which is. There to not be commercial use there on this, um, that would include items that were already addressed, but additional ones that would fall within the. Parameters of commercial equipment, vehicles, or machinery. Whether they're just being present or they're stored there, um. A driveway apron or parking area would need to be designed as presented, and uh the impervious exceeding. The allowable twenty-five percent needs to be within that parameters, and. Yeah. Uh, if this comes to our attention again, then obviously there's gonna be a different. Different direction in which this council will probably want to take, just to make sure that we're being fair with all within the city, and as they all try to be compliant.
I mean. But just to be clear, so. We show up there with a bobcat to. Pile the driveway or to do something at my dad's cabin or whatever, I don't want to hear about it, where, I mean, it's his own personal place, right, like, I get if there's a.
With all due respect, I think, I think the point that we're all kind of here, in consensus making is, it's different when it's per se a skid steer with a. With a bucket in front to to push snow, when we have two Peterbilt tractors with a lowboy, for example, and a flat deck, and then another pull behind.
We we don't plan on putting another dock in, so I don't think that that's going to be an issue, but again, like. It's, we are um. In the business of having that stuff or whatever, so if he's doing something personal on his own personal property, right, that's permitted and. Whatnot, I mean. We obviously can't park in where the twenty-five percent is, I think we kind of. Establish that, right, you know, but if he so chooses. I mean, I just don't want to come here and relitigate the whole thing, man, I do, I want it to go away, it's our intention to. Um, comply, right, you're not going to ideally see us, but um. Pretty much anytime that we do anything, um. We we tend to get noticed, right, so I I just, it it's our intention to comply. But I don't want to really get this deal every single time because a bobcat or something shows up like.
When do you think you can actually um put that vegetation in? To comply?
Well, continued that, Bethany, how long was that, so you, when did you?
I followed up, your deadline was June fifteenth, I followed up on June twentieth, and there are photos in your packet from June.
So I mean, it's substantially different from there, but I mean, I I. It it's hard for me to tell what your guys' expectation level is, it's obviously more than that, but is it like?
My my expectation is this, grass doesn't grow real well in sand if it were me, and what I've done in the past on my properties is have brought in. Um, class five. And uh. Some good topsoil, planted it, seeded it, let it go, yes, you're correct, sodding is a lot. Um. I.
Uh, perhaps let, um, Tom, what are? Your fe- your opinion, give us your.
What, I just have a few questions, but Ken.
Please do.
Recognizing that I'm not in the council, but Jethro is is what you're saying that. Uh, once Nashway is done, then that driveway is gonna get done the way, it it's gonna get improved somehow?
Yeah, to whatever the, I mean, it's like, I I'm pretty sure it's like eleven hundred square, I guess they didn't really finish before, but it doesn't matter, but yes, the driveway is going to be improved. Yeah. Not there, like this picture. That has.
Not there, like this picture, that has to be yard, right? You know, um. The, but the driveway will get asphalted or paved or whatever, but we are sorry, concrete.
What about the berm stuff? What's your plan for that?
Those are getting landscaped, so we're planning on putting trees and stuff. Just want to be good neighbors and revegetate, right?
At what what point will you be putting trees in on the berm?
Well, so here's the things, I just the uh last week I.
Next year, five years, ten years, or when 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 the wind blows.
Good point that that Councilman really is bringing up, because when I'm looking at this date um of when the structure is built, I I don't see the. Date on the application unless Bethany, I'm looking in.
And it's like twenty nineteen or something, you know, but.
Twenty nineteen?
Probably.
So Nashway was not under construction during that timeframe leading up until this, this. This construction season, um, why, why is there the wait? I mean, is is this the first time it's been like this? Since since that building has been constructed and the grass has grown, is this the first time that it's gotten to this point?
So the berms, so I guess you should clarify what you're asking. It it you mean the grass of the berms? So the berms out front, they were constructed in twenty or twenty-one, but it wasn't the fact that we. Just because naturally it's going to construction right now, it's been planned for a substantial amount of time, right? So. We didn't want to go, so the berm to the left there, to the right, right? So that is going to be landscaped with trees. Like what I was getting to is I contacted, maybe it's even yesterday, Crowing County to send the. Grading plan for the road, right? You know, because I'm like, maybe we can put the berms in, I mean, I'm sorry, put the trees in, landscape the berms. To clean it up, right? Um, in front of that. Close to naturally road, it doesn't have a curb, it's going to have a ditch and it it's pretty. They have a three to one slope coming off to three feet, but two or three feet, but they don't know and they have to put a culvert in under the driveway. And then they're going to grade up to our point at a three to one slope depending on what it is. So that's why it isn't. It it's not science, right? So they're going to try to match to a certain degree, but. We don't want to redo the thing. I guess that's my whole point, right? Because they're going to put a ditch in, but. We're not terribly busy, so if uh. Maybe we'll go landscape the thing this fall. I don't even know.
Yeah, I do, but Jethro. You guys are professionals, um. And I I don't think that you would have a customer's site look like this, and I don't think you'd want to live next to it, and this is probably going over from. Attorney to council, so maybe I should be careful, but. Uh, i- if that seed doesn't take the way it should. Is your is your commitment then to sod that, to alleviate what is clearly going to be an ongoing substantial impervious?
Our our commitment is to have grass there for sure. Now, I don't know that that I'm not going to agree to sod the thing or whatever, but our absolute commitment is to have grass for sure.
I mean, because it it goes to the idea of whether there's an enforcement action now or whether. You know, staff advises the council to let you have some time to let Nashway uh become what it's going to be and then see what you're.
Well, we're, I mean, the grass, that grass is going to get well before Nashway and none of that's, the only thing we're focusing on for. Uh, future landscaping is the berm and the driveway going in, but the grass there, that is getting resolved now.
So first year.
This year, yeah.
I I guess, just again, from from my standpoint and Bethany's standpoint, as we advise the council. What what to do for an enforcement action, whether there's something to be done now or whether there's more time on a clock for this thing to get. To be compliant, um I I guess. From my standpoint, I'd like some idea about when you think that's all going to happen, and I know it's again. I accept your explanation that Nashway has got to get fixed before you do stuff. Nobody wants you to.
You know, go to driving stuff, yeah, but I mean, that.
Yep. But but the council does need some commitment, the staff needs some commitment for a deadline when this thing is going to look like it should and when it's going to comply.
So you guys um.
And so you mean that to be sometime in twenty twenty-four? What's your timeline for that?
Um. So. For sure, by next spring, it'll be really good, you know, but maybe we could revisit this fall. Like I said, we're committed to try to. To get the deal um grass established, so I don't know if you. Maybe like October fifteenth or something, we could, you guys could revisit it or at least I can, Bethany can come out and take a look at it or something or um.
Good.
Oh, you have any big questions for Jethro?
Um, I've just been listening to the whole thing. Maybe I could interject and help put together some timelines, see if this makes sense for all parties. I mean, to put down grass seed and you said there is an irrigation system there?
Uh, yes, sir, Joey, you can see in that picture, the one right on the corner there, you know, the pole barn?
Yeah, so unfortunately, I can't see any of the photos, but uh, but I'm just, I'm. I'll just throw out a couple of things. Um, I would say the first step would be to get the driveway plan with Bethany in place and the exact square footage. That'd be step one and then put a timeline on that, work with Bethany on when that timeline is based upon the county. The next thing as far as grass grows for your turf grasses, your fescues, your rise, your blue grasses, you know, when you seed a yard. Um, the standard kind of germination rate in this period in this climate. Depending upon the type of fescue or bluegrass you put down is a twenty-one to twenty-eight day germination period. Where you'll see a noticeable green fuzz from nothing to be like, hey, the grass is growing on that. And so I guess I would establish a timeline of a before and after picture and just say, hey, Bethany, this is the date. That we're going to come out, reseed, overseed, you know, add some fertilizer to it. And then we, and then the clock starts from then and during that timeframe, you know, with the germination rate, say, okay, thirty days from now. We're going to come out, take another picture and uh, you know, compare, visibly compare, you know, maybe do a section or something like that, but then. That's a tangible date, set a timeframe and um kind of way to compare um. But go off the germination rate of the grass seed, so if if it obviously hasn't been seeded. You know, um correctly, or some of the seed didn't take place, you know, uh we'll be able to see, but. That kind of gives everybody a timeline on when something should look good. I'm going to use thirty days. You know, especially this time of year when your soil temperatures are hot, we are getting some rain, some moisture and irrigation system. Um, there's no reason that in in that time period, there shouldn't be a drastic change. Now, if there's not, yeah, then soil needs to be amended, lime added, fertilizer, whatever, but. I don't know if any of that information helps to put together a timeline, but I guess. That would be my suggestion.
How many irrigation heads do you have in there, Jethro?
I, I don't know, fifteen or something, I I. I, it's probably two, three zones, I would imagine, but my dad did it, not me, so. I I mean, in my mind, if we just set it up for like October fifteenth or something, or if you want to come out of the meanwhile, but it. What Joe said is accurate, right? And we um. It so it's uh, it's probably been about thirty days, I suppose, since, right? Did you say it's like June? Sorry, talking deals, June something, right? So it's been roughly thirty days and there's. Then it's substantial.
Yeah, the letter um was sent April fifth and you were given a June fifteenth timeline. And then on the twentieth was that first round of pictures that you saw without snow on the ground.
So about, yes, about thirty days is what it's been, Joe, since her first visit, when it got seeded. Just prior to her first visit, so.
Definitely. Yeah, so if if it's done again, yeah, so I'm just saying if it's done again, overseeded, you know, maybe aerated. You know, whatever, I can't see the pictures or the soil type, but you know, you know how to properly put down seed. So do it again, and then that starts the calendar, the timeline for Bethany and everyone to go look at it, go, okay. Realistically, in thirty days from this date, it should look substantially better.
Seems reasonable to me. So should we just?
Bethany, does that satisfy any enforcement measures that you would like to impose or is there anything additional that you like or? Would you would like to recommend?
Yeah, per the uh enforcement letter that was sent, um there were following actions and uh the first one is the property cannot be used for commercial or industrial use. And the use has to stop immediately. That did include the storage of materials, equipment and machinery. To my knowledge, that has stopped. Um, and so that includes storing inside um. So any commercial use of any of the machinery for the purposes of conducting business, it is a land use issue. Um, and so that will have to be met. The second one is uh the twenty-five percent impervious limits need to be met. So that is what I'm talking about tonight.
Yep. So if there isn't a substantial difference. Then we would have to take. Whatever next step we deem appropriate. Um, how hard is, was there anything done to loosen that soil up? That's pretty compacted soil.
Yeah, no, the um, a- again, I didn't do it, but my dad's been.
He didn't do anything to loosen that soil up. It's pretty compacted. You can't see the pictures, can you, Joe?
Yeah.
You can't?
No, you can't.
It's it's compact.
No, I I can't see any photos on your screen.
Okay, the compaction level is similar to the compaction that was up at the garden cottages. Um, and we all know what that was like, so.
Yeah, so I would say, you know, go through.
Something to bust up that soil, so it takes seed and it takes water. I mean, enough water. Right grass, you can get to grow almost anywhere, but.
Yeah, and add some fertilizer.
Mm-hmm. It it just got fertilized, I think, about two weeks ago.
But um, and then trees, I mean, there'd be nothing stopping you from putting trees in on this side of that berm. Counts the city, the cu- the county isn't going to come in any further from the side of the berm that we're looking at here, so. Um, you know, there there's a lot of things you could do, I think, Jethro, that would give a substantial look that you're trying to help. And and make that get to that twenty-five percent, but.
I I would just say too, for everyone's knowledge right now, July and August is not the time to move trees. You want to wait until generally after Labor Day. You don't move trees during the growing season, so that would be a fall thing to do it properly, just till ever right now.
I concur, however, we should have thought of that in June.
Um, sure, yep.
Anyway, okay. Tom, did you have any more for us?
It it just, uh, Jethro, first of all, thanks for coming in and talking about this. Um, it it makes sense to me. Some of the comments Joe made there about you working with Bethany um for some review of what you're doing here, maybe this will look a lot different in a few months. Um, so I think you deserve the benefit of the doubt for that, what that berm's going to look like that driveway. Uh, that you're going to uh attend to that, so it would make sense to me to, let's use the rest of the season to. Work our way through that process and then maybe just set this for review for the October agenda.
October or September?
Whatever.
October.
October.
Part of October. Um. And for now, hold off on any enforcement action while we work our way through that.
Right, yeah.
We'd rather get it, work it out than do enforcement.
We would, and it's with good faith from all of us up here, also with yourself, that um it's noted that this has obviously been a structure that's been in place for. A handful of years now. Um, Nashway Road was not under construction when this property was built and. Yeah, understanding that it's now a reason why you're withholding from doing additional modifications to this to to alter it, to make it. Conforming, um, we, it just doubles the expectation that it will be then done properly on the return. Bethany, is there anything else you'd like to add?
So we revisited at the October meeting, you'd have a chance to work with Jethro, go back, I'll check it out, keep a tab and see how it's going.
Yes, I would be happy to supply you with an update at that time.
Well, that, okay. That work for everybody?
And I think that'd be appropriate to have in a motion.
Yes.
Yes, so to work with the city planner, um, continue it and we will bring this back for review at the October council meeting.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Engineers.
And I'll second it.
Hmm, I just had one question when I was looking at this, the rain we got, the ocean that we had, where where is the runoff going here?
You know, it's, it's all flat, so it. It it doesn't really go anywhere, it just sinks in, so to the left of this berm, right, there's a berm to the left, that's probably the lowest deal, but. It, it doesn't go anywhere. There's going to be a ditch out.
You don't have any protections for other than that berm for runoff, then.
But it it's all flat, everything is flat all the way around it, so to the right there, see the.
Where's this go here when it comes off the top and that bay?
Um, uh, a few. Uh, pretty much where she's taking pictures, so I don't know where that is, I'm sorry, um. Uh. I would say it's right there, Bethany, is that we?
I only see that.
Pretty much where that's right there, that's essentially where it goes.
There's a few of those sprinklers and I saw three of them when I was there. Um, there is a bit of ponding over.
Right in that area, yeah. Yeah, right next. Yeah, there's, it's essentially the whole lot's flat, everything. Water doesn't go anywhere, I believe so.
I'll make a motion that we um have staff work with Jethro and keep track of it and then report back to us at the October council meeting.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, no problem, take care, general.
I hope we don't see you again. Okay, uh-oh.
Oh.
What's good? Uh, number six, Gully Trail Project Phase Four Pay Application.
Yeah, I have uh. Mayor, I have the second pay application for the Gully Trail Phase Four, two hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. That brings us now to about forty-one percent of the project plus last week, so probably forty-five percent of the budget for sure.
Yeah.
Um.
Questions?
Questions? Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Gully Trail Project Base Four Pay Application Number Two. In the amount of? In the amount of two hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Recommend, oh, no, Roundabout Project Pay Application Number Two.
Yeah, uh, again, this is the second uh pay application. For seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. There is still a five percent retainage. All the work is complete right now. Um. My plan is to do a walkthrough on Friday or next week and then the following uh pay application, we'd close the project. For final payment. If one thirty fours are brought in, all the other things get get to us.
So there's punch list items to go through?
Actually, there is not a punch list right now. That's why I said we're going to do a walkthrough. I'll do the walkthrough with the county and uh on theirs and ours. And uh with uh the contractor. Uh, at this point, they're pretty good.
It's beautiful.
Well, I gotta tell you, from a person who uses it every day, it is a lot nicer than what was there before, so.
Well, you can even park right in the middle, can't you, Jesse?
Drive circles around that inner sidewalk, not saying.
And there are worse uh two signs we're going to, we're putting up and did not look today to see if they were done. The. We added two, no, no parking, I mean, uh, do not enter signs.
Are they going to be putting up those speed signs again, do you know? The county head.
Oh, I know, no, they won't be going back up.
Okay.
He's probably too confusing because we're, they're bringing it down fifteen miles an hour and those are thirty, yep.
Yeah. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Roundabout Project Pay Application Number Two in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Period. Hey. Um, mayor and council reports, um, we'll do that because we're going to be going into closed sessions. And then we'll be coming out of those just to go back into another one and then the second one will come out just simply to adjourn. So I have nothing at this time. Council members?
No.
I got engaged on Sunday.
Congratulations. I have to talk to that young lady.
Local, a lot of people do, take a number.
And let her know how lucky she is.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, congrats.
Thank you.
How about you, Joe?
I'm not getting married, no.
No, I don't have anything.
There's one in every crowd.
Yeah.
Mr. Hall, anything?
Nothing.
Okay.
Mayor, I just want a reminder for the council, August third is the Parks and Rec Commission meeting at five o'clock. They will be touring the parks facilities.
Facilities, the council is invited to attend if you'd like to hear about our infrastructure and some of the challenges, ideas, opportunities. It's just a great way to see some things, um you know, in person and uh and to walk with the commission. So you're welcome to attend.
Will that constitute a quorum?
It's okay. No business will be conducted. It's posted that.
Those meetings are posted anyway.
Yeah.
So we could all show up.
We're good.
And they'll be here.
Starting here.
Yep.
And then they'll tour around.
Parks and Rec on August third.
Um I let's take a ten minute recess, so or however much time you need to reboot the.
Close session.
Oh. Well.
I gave you the motion, John. You just have to read the motion to go into closed session for the property purchase.
All right. Uh recommendation to move to closed session. Presumed to Minnesota Statute thirteen D zero. Point zero five subdivision three C, consideration of offer for property purchase for PID. Two eight one, two zero, six nine six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session.
And we'll take a five-ish, a little more than that recess. And Joe, we will start a new Zoom, sorry.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.